So again, like everyone has been saying to y'all for the past two and a half years, remove police from schools. Make sure that adults who decide to, even with the wonky power dynamics, still go ahead and use a system, a person that can actually inflict deadly force as the police against children. Make sure that there's an accountability process for that. Make sure that you're actually investing in the leadership, wellness, and creativity of Black youth and other youth of color, folks with disabilities, LGBTQ youth, the most vulnerable in our communities. Make sure that you're investing in transformative justice, not just with lip service, but with practice every day. And make sure that community actually has control, meaning when you hear from your constituents, that we, you actually take that into consideration, you take it seriously, and that we actually have power to check y'all. And we have power over the climate of-
Thank you, Monger. Shira?
My name is Shira Adams, and I'm, my pronouns are she/her/hers. Today I will be talking about Black, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, intersex, and queer folks, and how they are harmed in schools, and how they are at high risk from school pushouts and school discipline. When a queer student doesn't feel safe at school from homophobic-ass teachers, SROs and staff, they will not come to school. Black youth especially experience more school discipline, more than, which pushes them into the justice system. They don't come to school because teachers will be biased with everything they do. They will misgender them, call them a name that they do not want to be called, and don't respect their pronouns, and also punish them when they fight students and staff when they are being homophobic. Because of those things, they don't come to school. Now here come the damn cops harassing them, doing the same damn thing as the teachers, but on top of that, they will get truancies for being late or missing class. Trans folks and gender nonconforming students are most likely, most likely don't have a stable home and are at high risk of being homeless because of family or households being homophobic. If you are queer, Black, and disabled, that is a big-ass target on your back. I repeat, if you are queer, Black, and disabled, that is a big-ass target on your back. Last meeting, I talked about mental health and how I struggle with it. This time I would tell you how being a queer Black woman and gender nonconforming student was hard. I would get misgendered, and I would correct them, and they would never respect that. They said, "As long as you look like a boy, I will call you a boy," and the adults would laugh at it. I felt attacked and left the room. Instantly, security guards started to follow me, and I got even more angrier. At this point, I was seeing- Did you know 95%- Did you know 95% of LGBT students might not complete high school? Those who do not graduate are at high risk at negative future outcome, which mean more involvement with the criminal injustice system and much higher poverty. So by putting cops in schools, it's making chances of Black queer students getting caught up in injustice system even higher. They are being criminalized in and out of school. You have a responsibility to provide excellent education for Black queer students, and cops in schools do not provide that. Freedom Youth Squad have four demands. One, get cops out of schools. That means completely take them out of schools. Invest into leadership, wellness, and creativity for Black youth and youth of color. That means invest into their mental health and give them room to make mistakes and learn. Youth, parents, community have real decision-making power over schools. Let Black, Brown, Black and Brown youth learn their history and know the good things about Black folks instead of that brings them, breaks them, break them down. Use transformative justice instead of punishing youth. That means bring restorative justice without damn cops. I'm gonna do a chant. For our freedom.
It is our duty to fight for our freedom.
It is our duty to win.
It is our duty to win.
We must love and support one another.
We must love and support one another.
We have nothing to lose but our change.
We have nothing to lose but our change.
It is our duty to fight for our freedom.
It is our duty to fight for our freedom.
It is our duty to win.
It is our duty to win.
We must love and support one another.
We must love and support one another.
We have nothing to lose but our change.
We have nothing to lose but our change.
It is our duty to fight for our freedom.
It is our duty to fight for our freedom.
It is our duty to win.
It is our duty to win.
We must love and support one another.
We must love and support one another.
We have nothing to lose but our change.
We have nothing to lose but our change.
I say, I say, I say, I say.
Thank you, Shira. My name is Maiton, and I'm a youth justice coordinator at Freedom Inc. Out of the three demands, one of them is invest in youth of color, creativity, wellness, and leadership. When I say invest in youth, I want you all to look at girls of color and kids of color that has a disability. In my previous testimonies, I have said that I was one of those kids that had a learning disability. I was one of those Mong girls listed as someone who needed extra help. Students with disabilities are more than twice as likely to receive an out-of-school suspension than students without disabilities. Never had I ever gone to the police to tell them about my problems. If I was struggling in my class, I would go to my case manager and tell them, tell him about my problems instead. I'd rather talk to someone I trust than going to someone who can deport and take away my- Since I'm a Mong, since I'm a girl and I could relate to other girls, I knew why they didn't want to show up to school, because they felt unsafe and they get sexually harassed. When I say invest in girls' leadership, wellness, and creativity, I want the school to have programs that can help them become their own leaders. Girls don't get looked up as leaders, and I believe that girls have, I believe that girls should have training of what they want to become one. I am looked up as a leader at Freedom Inc. Why? Because they took me in, gave me political education, showed me that I could speak up to horrible things that were happening around me. I have the courage to come up here every month because of them. They provided me, provided me a space that I could go to and learn about where I came from. They made me feel comfortable, they made me, they made sure I understood what was going on and did not judge me for what I was going through. They, but they believed in my leadership and made me who I am today. If school saw me as a leader, I would not be stuck here getting looked up, looked down upon because of how the school labeled me as. I would not have doubted myself and said that I was dumb and that everybody else was smart. Students that have a disability, and our girls should have a voice to say what they want. They should have a say and be looked up as leaders because we are human beings and we are unique. Lastly, at the end of the day, the police need to be out of our schools. It is unsafe, the police are in our schools. Police don't belong in schools to control us. We have enough of that out of the streets and in jails. Police need to stop acting like they could make a change when they really can't. So I'm asking again to completely remove the police from the schools, meaning police are not ever called and there is a concern going on and that police are never on school grounds. Invest in girls and kids with disability, creativity, leadership, and wellness by putting this money into things we need to achieve. And lastly, let people, let people that are mostly impacted, Black and other people of color, make the decisions. So if a student is getting suspended, their parents or students representative in a restorative justice coordinator should sit down together with the kid and plan out what the kid should do instead. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Alina, and I am a student from White Horse Middle School. I'm here to talk about what other things we should invest in other than cops and better school lunches. For many, many students, school lunches are their only meal because they probably can't afford food at home. And to have unhealthy lunches will only make it harder for students to process. Instead of putting money into police officers who terrorize your students and oppress them, you all should think what would be helpful to your students. Things like school supplies, textbooks, and bus cards, what they don't have to pay for. You all should think about what makes your students happy and not. Do you think cops locking up students will make them any better? No, it's not. It's making students separate from their family and ruin their education. As a student of color myself, seeing other students of colors getting locked up makes me feel unsafe. It doesn't even make me feel like I belong at the school anymore, knowing that cops are there. I have many Black friends, and I worry for them that one day they'll get locked up for acting their age as a teenager. I'm also worried for myself too, because I have anger issues and sometimes cannot control my anger out there. Teachers and staff don't teach me how to control my anger or deal with my emotions. They'll just probably put me in detention or tell the police to deal with me, at which I'll be more mad because I'm being put in a situation where I don't want to be faced with. I'd rather like to talk to my, investing in police, invest in someone who will help me control my anger, someone who won't view me as a problem. Take police out of schools, invest in Black youth and other youth of color. Let the community have control over school safety.
Thank you, Alina. Next, Marisela Gomez-Gastianos.
Hi. My name is Marisela Gomez. I'm a community organizer here in Madison. Today, I stand with Freedom Inc. and our Black and Brown youth in advocating for no police at our schools. Wisconsin is categorized, categorized as one of the racist states, highest segregation in housing and education. Our schools are concentrating on bringing safety and control. Our history has taught us that that isn't the case, hold on. Our history has taught us that that is not the case. Police officers do not bring safety or control in our schools. They're profiled, are criminalized at such young age. We don't, we do not need police at our schools. We need more culturally competent counselors and therapists who can support our youth. Our youth, our community have endured enough trauma in the hands of the police. We keep saying that our youth are our future, so I encourage you to listen to them and to their demands. Madison needs to wake up and recognize that we are living in a racist state and that we live in a white supremacist patriarchal country. We can heal, we can't heal our community if we continue to traumatize our youth with the involvement of the police. Please listen to our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Laquita Goodwin.
I'm here speaking as a parent tonight. I didn't write anything out, I just came with my heart in my hand and on my sleeves. They said it all. Everything that I was gonna say, they said it all. But speaking from a parent, these are mostly children who has these concerns, parents too. But mainly the childrens because they deal with it every day. Not us. We are at work, you know, we're at this meeting, that meeting, we're here, we're there, we're everywhere else. We're not in the schools every day with the youth, with the children. I had three sons to graduate, three kids to attend a Madison Metropolitan School District. Four, three graduated from high school. I got one more to graduate to Central High School. One did not graduate. He dropped out, and he'd rather sit in McDonald's and eat McDonald's, ditch school, go over another friend's house who was ditching because they didn't like the cops. Because they didn't want to go to school, they didn't want to eat the lunch. The lunch was nasty. If I had, if I had three kids to successfully graduate and walk across that stage and receive a diploma, what did I do wrong with the last one? I couldn't figure it out. So I had to sit down, I had to listen to him. And that's mainly what his problem was, that the police harassed him. They didn't like the way he talked. They didn't like the way, you know, he was, I've never had a problem with him selling drugs or anything of that nature. He's just had, he was, he was just troubled in other ways. And so instead of them calling me and calling the parents, saying, "We need you to come to school, we need you to punch out from work, and we need you to come to school," yeah, we gotta make a living. But if you give some of the parents, if you give parents the back to control, as if, if instead of cops being able to take all the control, maybe these kids, we will have a better success rate of high school graduates, especially children of color. Because if, if, if they take the power from the parents, the parent grab their child by the arm or by the coat tail and say, "Come here, you in trouble, you disrespected your teacher today." They called me. You know what happened? They take us to jail. Because the kid get mad and they say, "Oh, my mom, she, she, she put her hands on me." And so now what do we do? Then they go to school, you got the cops. As soon as they get in trouble at school, they put the cuffs on them. They don't call the parents. I had to pick my last son up who didn't graduate from a police station. I never even knew he was arrested by the cops. They never told me. I found out through social media that my son was in a juvenile detention center. Instead of calling me to come to the school and help correct the situation, he was pushed into the justice system, into the juvenile detention centers. Instead of me giving, being given the opportunity to fix it, they didn't give me the chance. All they did was put the cuffs on him and walked him out and said, "You disorderly." I could've changed that. You know why I know? Because he's an adult now with the GED. So he did something eventually, he listened to me, but they took the power from me. I just want it back before she did.
Thank you. Yubin Ting.
Hi. My name is Yubin, and I'm a doctoral student and educator at UW-Madison. I am invested in getting cops out of school because cops feed oceans in our community. Instead of spending public funds on police, the MMSD should spend it on mental health counseling, programs on wellness and creativity, and employ more Black teachers for Black youth. Police are historically racist institutions that has never had the interest of people of color in this country. I've heard countless stories, as you did, of youth being harassed, beaten, and wrongfully accused, and get citations from the very environment that they're supposed to learn in, by police that are paid by taxes that I and all of us pay to the city. This is absolutely disgusting and shameful, and your refusal to hear their voice is disrespectful. Investing in our youth in the community looks like lifting up youth of color, such as through investing more money in counseling services and also employing Black teachers. You don't hear the voices of these youth and community members of color, but you base your white stories. I would like to mention a few scientific facts to inform your decision. Black teachers matter according to countless research in the social sciences. The, according to a working paper published this month by the National Bureau of Economic Research, where researchers from Johns Hopkins and American University, they outline findings that show that Black students who are exposed to one Black teacher by the third grade were 13% more likely to enroll in college. Those who had two Black teachers were 32% more likely to enroll in college. Marginalized, also queer, trans, and disabled students are much more likely to suffer from learning in a racially hostile climate, such as the ones that the MMSD provides. I've experienced this myself, but also seen it in the students that I teach at UW-Madison. Furthermore, according to the National Alliance of Mental Illness, 70% of youth that are arrested have a mental condition, probably from the immense psychological pressure that they go through by being in a hostile environment and also participating in these processes while they could be learning, for example. The school board today propagates and further exacerbates this unjust system through the decision that you are able to make. As a member of the community, educator, and scholar, I'm absolutely against the use of tax money to aggravate systematic racism in my community.
Thank you.
I am investing in getting police out of schools because they make me feel uncomfortable and unsafe in a place where I'm supposed to feel secure and safe. Instead of spending money on policing schools, invest the money into more diverse counselors so people of color can relate to and have a deeper relationship with their counselors because they come from the same background. Also, investing money into better selective classes such as a cultural hip-hop, hip-hop music class, it could be a way African-American kids express their culture, pain, and feelings. Police do not know how to handle school issues without getting physical. They were not trained to be around kids. They were not trained to understand that kids are kids and school issues should be, not be treated like the law. They're putting schools to protect us, but, but what school shooting have they stopped? None. Instead of protecting, they harming. Y'all do the math. Are y'all that here begging for my safety? Would y'all listen? Would you care? Of course you would. One time, an innocent Black boy was walking in the hall with his shirt untucked. The school policy was to have your shirt tucked in, but his wasn't. Instead of the officer telling him to tuck it, the police officer brutally beat him. Hearing stories like this make me furious because you, you dumbass school where people are supposed to be helping us, but instead y'all imprisoning us in our own schools. This is why we're demanding that you take cops out of schools, invest in youth of color, and let the community and kids decide on whether or not cops should be in schools.
Thank you.
Here we go with another speech for y'all, so I'm sure y'all know what I'm here for. We, we have been demanding for y'all to take cops out of schools, make something better like having counselors in schools instead of cops. Maybe kids slash students just need someone to talk to. You never know what people go through at home or what their case might be. For y'all to put something so harmful in our schools, you should be ashamed of yourself. How would you guys even know what it's like having cops in schools? You went through school perfectly fine, why can't we? It's better solution to all problems. What is the real reason you want cops in schools? To harm colored students or what? Because I can't see any other reason why they should be in there. This, that's why us colored people have moms and dads or even counselors you can call on, not a cop, someone that will pull a gun out on you if you're not following their rules. Do you really think we are just asking for you guys to take cops out of schools for no reason? No, we have been, we have seen the damage that they have done or can do, and we are just trying to protect our people. If you really cared about having, if you really cared about colored people, you wouldn't even consider having cops in schools. It's only a matter of time until a student really get hurt by a cop. This is why we are demanding you take cops out of schools, invest in, invest in youth of color, let the parents slash students decide what they want.
Thank you.
Give me a chance to disclose, to use a tip we compose, postcards about how we feel about police in our schools, or our schools when all is said and done. I'll examine all of the postcards anyway, that would be exhausting, so let me enlighten you. All US even saying police into schools to seek change, but there are still school shootings. Fights are still breaking out, and Black youth are still getting arrested. Where is the change? You hand the police a badge and a gun and they think they're in charge. Without a badge and a gun, police won't be a damn thing. They're not actually contributing anything else, for once, eating for breakfast and lunch. What they want to study and what classes they want to take. Schools are draining because of lack of structure. How about you guys do your job and do what you know is right? It's take police out of schools. We may not much see issues in Madison regarding them in our schools, but in other countries, cities, and states, they harm us and get away with it. We need change in our schools. We need a lot of diversity within our teachers. Let them teach us material that will help us on the real road. Stop labeling Black youth as IEPs. I'm invested into getting police out of schools because I witness others getting harmed or threatened by the police. Black youth have little to no hope for a good way for teachers to make schools increasingly more secure by enlisting more advocates and clinicians as opposed to including more law and petition officials. Having police school lead to more school suspensions, removals, and lawful activities particular among Black youth. Completely take them out of schools, invest money into leadership, wellness, and creativity for Black youth. Let youth, parents, community have a real decision making the power over school. Give Black youth a chance to gain proficiency with their history and know the beneficial things about their people rather than the things that separated us. Use transformative justice instead of punishing Black youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Zorn Mora.
I feel tall. Hello? Okay. Good evening, my name is Zorn. So, really nervous, I don't know how the young people do it every week. So I applaud the amazing leadership of these Black, Mong, and Kamai girls who continuously share their ideas, voices, and creativity to bring light to the community. And especially during this time was what helped share October, October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And on top of that, last two months, the Mong community witnessing two murder suicides due to domestic violence. And then I think about all the trans and gender nonconforming people who- So what do you do when everything in the world tells you you are bad? You are ugly? You are lazy? You are stupid and you are not worthy? What do you do? I'll tell you what you do. You listen to these girls. They come here continuously, and they're telling you. And yet you still sit here for the last three years and do nothing? I don't know if you all understand the urgency behind this. You may think, "This is just school, people come learn, we'll change the curriculum and all that." But I'm telling you, people are losing their lives. And I really think about these, these trans women, and majority of them, well, almost all of them, that we have been reading about that have been murdered are all Black, trans women. So this world tells Black girls they're not worthy. They tell Black, trans women, "You do not exist." You might be thinking, "What does that have anything to do with this and policing?" It has a lot to do with it. It's about creating safe environments. It's about transforming. And that's what our young people are asking you to do, is to transform, to be better. The school district has the power to change the narrative. This narrative of you are bad, you are ugly, you are lazy, you are stupid, you are not worthy. So my question is, how is the school district actively combating against white supremacy? How are you all actively combating against homophobia, transphobia, patriarchy, anti-Blackness? You have the power. Change the narrative by investing- Change the narrative by investing in the leadership wellness and creativity of black youth and other youth of color. The school district has the power to shift power to the community. Do it.
Thank you. Sambo?
Sambo, nice walk, please. Three weeks ago, ICE, which is Immigration Custom Enforcement raided the component community across the country and separated more families. I am so heartbroken seeing my people being separated over and over again, being displaced over and over again because of this racist system that we lived in. ICE targeted people who doesn't look white or brown complexity. The same with police. They only target black and brown students. You all agree that ICE should not be in our city because they separate families. Police and ICE are no different. Police lead our blacks and brown students to school, to prison pipeline. We need to face this because this is a crisis. Across the country, students are being suspended, expelled, shuffled off to disciplinary alternative schools, and even arrested for minor behavior such as being late, violating your dress code. Instead of a trip to counselors or a call to homes, students are being handcuffed and moved from school to jail and to courthouse. Metal detectors, armed-guarded police are common in our schools while libraries and council. Our schools are using overly harsh discipline policy and practices that are ineffective, unfair, and determined. And also research showing that this zero tolerance approach does not work. It doesn't make schools safer. Instead, this approach lowers educational outcomes, damaged relationships within schools, and diverts funding from providing high-quality educational experience for our black and brown students. This system of discipline and prison-like environment are not preparing young people for success. They are conditioning them for a life of incarceration. All students deserve better. They deserve safety, quality, school. Who is caught in this prison pipeline? We are punishing students more often and more harshly based on who they are or what they look like. Across the country, we find student of colors, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender students, and students with disability disproportionately subjected to hush discipline. Significantly, research show that race matters in discipline. Racial disparity are not the result of difference in behavior, but instead due to difference in treatment. We know that there are efforts led by youth and parents with school district and are stakeholder in this country. Freedom Inc. demands, take matters, take police out of school completely and create accountability process into programming and invest money in youth of colors and their creativity, leadership, and wellness. Give community control over school safety, meaning youth, parents, and other trusted adults have the power to make decision. And lastly, please think about this, use transformative justice instead of punishing youth. Thank you.
I thought you school were members that you truly care for our education, so why are you taking our learning away when you should be taking cops away? Giving students suspensions just because of arguments or fights is not helping them. It's actually harming them. Giving students suspensions for standing in the hallway during class time is harming them. Out of the fall, students are getting suspended for simply standing in the hall. You are taking a child away from school for no good reason. There is never a good enough reason to kick kids out of school and take away their education. Cops do not build relationships with students. How can they build relationships with students, especially when a cop shot Tony Robinson and that cop wasn't even charged with anything? But when a student is arguing or fighting, which is a normal teenage behavior, they get locked up right away. So how come that one cop isn't locked up but students are locked up, especially black students? So who is the actual harm? The police and you because you are keeping police there. You don't hold the police accountable when you have the power. Many students complain about lack of resources in our schools. Why aren't you listening? We are tired of buying our own supplies. We are tired of those nasty and fake lunches. We are tired of paying for bus passes to even with finding scholarships, tuition, and getting into college. Sometimes we can't even worry about that because we have to worry about the police being in schools all the time. So use that money to support us, not the cops. Why use $3,600 on fourth cost when you can really invest in black students and other students of color? Take police out of schools, invest in leadership, creativity, and wellness of black youth and other youth of color. Let the community have control over what happens in schools.
Thank you.
What's up, y'all? My name is Mike Davis, I'm with Freedom Inc. For the last two or three years, I feel like we've been wasting our time, so to speak, outside of the year. But I wanted to go keep talking about how schools are inherently anti-black and how the stories of students and experiences, especially of black students, are always displaced or not even legible in a school context. I mean, we're in a context right now where the security guard of a black student makes international news, but we don't even know that student's name, right? It's international to bring the surveillance and patrol and policing black on the bodies of black students, even when our security guard is black. So, since we like to waste, play piano for a minute.
Thanks, Mike, that was really cool. We have Jacques. Jacques next? We have Jacques next? Are you going?
Yep, we're switching because...
Is this on? Okay, we're switching. Did you register, Bianca?
Yep, he's gonna be number twenty-three, I'll be number nineteen.
Is Jacques on?
He's in the bathroom, we're just gonna switch.
You're just gonna switch? Okay.
Okay. I married a good one, didn't I? So...
Is your mic on?
Can you hear me, y'all? Okay. We're here again to uplift the demands of Freedom Inc. And I want to say a few things. The first thing is, this just came out on social media a few weeks ago. An eleven-year-old in Farmington, New Mexico, I think, was assaulted by a police officer in school. She was an eleven-year-old black girl with disabilities, was assaulted by a school police officer over some cafeteria milk. Two dollars and thirty-five cents, I think the milk is, right? And in Madison, I know we like to think that we're different, an eleven-year-old black girl got her hair pulled out last year, right? We think protecting black girls means telling them what to wear, means telling them how to act, means telling them what they can and can't do with their body. We think that means assaulting them and justifying people assaulting them when they have done something wrong, right? And that doesn't mean that, right? History is watching us, history is watching all of you, and it would be ashamed of y'all, right? It would be ashamed of MMSD, it would be ashamed of the school board, it is going to be ashamed of this country, right? Freedom Inc. or people disrupting the school board members or the school board meetings, and history is not gonna condemn us, right, for cussing. History isn't gonna condemn us from interrupting a school board meeting. History is gonna condemn the people that have and it always will, right? History is gonna condemn the people that think it's okay to be violent towards children. I always hear the question like, well, what do you do if we remove police from our communities, right? You're abolitionists, if we remove police, if we get rid of jails, if we stop the state from harming black people, what are we gonna do to hold black people accountable? Or what are we gonna do to hold black students accountable when they act up? First of all, act up is anti-black as hell. Second of all, I address harm every day in my work. I'm a domestic violence and sexual assault advocate, so I address harm every day, right? Some people that have been through the worst types of harm. And I also would say, how do we hold y'all accountable, right? How do we hold y'all accountable for harming black children? And what should we do with y'all since y'all allow police in our schools, since y'all allow violence in our schools? I also would say that you can address harm of people, right, especially children. Again, I do this every single day. I recently visited an organization in Albuquerque, New Mexico, who they work with youth who have been formerly incarcerated, and I apologize, I'm definitely gonna go over that. They work with youth that have been formerly incarcerated, that have been surviving homelessness, that have dealt with a lot of violence from the state and the community. And their kids are amazing. They have staff that understand what kids have been through, they don't kick them out of the organization, they don't call the police, they have a sweat lodge, they have a meditation room, they have therapists, counselors, advocates, they work with parents, right? They have a massage room, right, for kids to like calm down, right? And I work with and support another organization in LA, and they have their high school, they do not have police, they do not have security. They're who teach a decolonized curriculum. They have a safety team that makes, their goal is not to police their children, their goal is to make sure their children have what they need so that they can go to school, right? So there's no truancy. And they don't see them as criminals, they see them as children. And you choose to see black children as criminals. You choose to invest in criminalizing students over supporting their needs. And we don't need that. We need schools, we need people that see, that don't see our youth as a problem but see our youth as the solution to the problem. And that's what we need y'all to be on.
Thank you, Bianca. Jacques?
My name is Vinnie. I go to White Horse Middle School. Sometimes I get nervous at school. When I'm nervous at school, I don't want to be yelled at. I heard that a girl at my school was yelled at and thrown to the ground by a teacher for wearing too much body spray. She was probably nervous just like me. And I get nervous. I tell my mom that I am nervous and she tells me not to be nervous. But the teacher pushed her to the ground instead of axing her. She was nervous. Teacher should not push the girl because she probably didn't know that she put a lot of body spray on herself. I am not afraid of the teacher because he doesn't work there anymore, but I am afraid of cops because they might hit me like they did the kid at West High School. I want no cops or teachers who might hit me at school and better future instead.
Thank you. Mei Ying?
Hi. I'm here again today as a parent of five children that attended Madison's public schools and as an advocate for my black and brown communities. I often hear too much that our people are policed because we don't know how to behave or that our children's are just all out of control. So that's why I see that police is not meant for schools or anything, or they're not protecting our black and brown children. Example would be East High School. There was a boy who was criminalized for a fishing blade out of his backpack, and his backpack was searched, and the police was involved. And when police gets involved, and even the school system, they dehumanize, they fail our children. They fail this boy to the point where he had to, they made him look like a villain, that he didn't feel comfortable in school, to the point that he had to drop out of East High School. A tenth grader dropping out of East High School? And you think that that's protecting our children? That's like wanting to put our childrens in two cages. I do not want any money invested into policing our children or into building new cages at all. If you have all that money that you're putting into paying police more with their salary, put that money into investing into more teachers, paying teachers more, creating smaller classrooms and hiring more teachers. Invest that money into MONGs and black histories. Please see our black and brown children as children and not products that you can just toss around and throw into cages when you want to, because you don't want to see them be successful. By investing into our children, I mean investing into their education because they are our leaders of today. Thank you.
Thank you. Jewel Adams?
Hello, ladies. Hello. First, I want to say I'm here because I'm totally against...
Uh, first I wanna say I'm here because I'm totally against no cops in school. And then I also wanna say that the looks that you all have on your own face, it's not a caring or a concerning look. Now, I might be judging, but I'm really not misjudging. There is no, I see this one young lady over here that's under 20 years of old age, probably. She's the only one that has a look of concern. And this is my opinion, not saying it is true, but nine out of 10, it's not false. But what, these kids come here month after month complaining about they don't want cops in school. And being totally ignored. Okay, who's the problem? When I wake up and look at the news, it seems like the mo-, the police are doing more harm than children. What about sex trafficking? Shouldn't the police be on that and not on the kids? There's a whole epidemic of other issues going on outside of the school that polices need to be attending to. They do not need to be in our schools attending to our youths and our young adults. Scaring them, that's what they're doing, scaring them. Signing them up for to become felons and criminals at a young age. Giving them records. Putting their names out there so that they could go on C cap and be seen as young terrible kids. The crimes is not committed in the school ladies. All of you all are women sitting up there. I'm sure you have a child or two. These young women come here month after month. How many other kids have to come here to, uh, talk about they don't want cops in school? Do it have to be kids of, uh, the other color? So that you all can hear and understand and do something about it? We do not need cops in our schools. We need the cops to do what they supposed to do and stop beating up on people. Every day you look at the news, the cops done shot somebody or killed somebody. I looked at the news, this one, a five-year-old girl hollering about, please get off my mom. To the police. How disturbing is that? So what is she gonna go when she go to school and see a police in her school? What is she's gonna do? She's gonna be frightened to death. We do not need police in our schools. Now, do you want some of these, uh, uh, solution? Get some of these young parents, some young mothers and some, uh, grandmas or whoever else to go and help patrol the schools. They can control their, control our children. We don't need the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacque?
Alright, uh, good evening. I'm here, this is my second school board meeting and, uh, I just wanted to come to you all today in support of no cops in schools. Um, a lot has happened over the last week or two and, um, I'm sure it's changed our discussion a little bit, but a lot has happened nationally in a week or two as well, not just in Madison. Uh, everyone probably saw the, and maybe mentioned today before I got here, the 11-year-old girl who was being abused by the, um, cop. I forget where it was actually, but she was, he was on top of her, she tried to exit the school. Um, the employee from the school was telling the police officer to like calm down, even though he initiated the contact, which is always how it, how it goes. The student's being disruptive and then try to retract and say, wait, wait, can you stop? I don't want the wait, wait, can you stop to be a possibility in schools in Madison or for kids in Madison. Um, the teacher who initiated the contact with the police officer is wrong in that regard to be using the police in that way and the police officer is dead wrong. Regardless of what happens to him, I know that something like that will happen in Madison again. Will be, uh, will victimize another student in Madison and I don't want that to happen. Um, it's been really clear to me when people come up here and talk about what their desires are, uh, what can happen. I also know as a school board and as someone who studies education, what kind of resources you all have at your disposal and kind of people you can reach out to to make sense of a platform or agenda and do what you need to do. I wanna know what's holding that up, um, and I also wanna just echo, uh, Freedom Inc.'s sort of platform around the removal of police from schools, the creation of accountability policies for school personnel who rely on police, um, investment in the leadership wellness and creativity of black and non-black students of color, control over school safety for black young people, parents, communities, and the use of transformative justice as opposed to punitive discipline. Um, hopefully this comes to pass and we can see this happen in Madison. Or else you'll have people like they were, I'm not even from, last week and the week before, asking about what's going on in Madison and why is the district responding in the way that it is. And I'm sure that's embarrassing for you all, not that embarrassment means action, but it should be embarrassing and it should evoke some sort of action, so, uh, that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you. Nico? Nico?
Content and context are very important. You know, we saw a lot of news articles about the content of what happened, uh, at West High School a couple of weeks ago between Marlon Anderson and the youth. Uh, but what was the context in which that was happening? And the context is that that environment and a lot of the school environments here in Madison operate in a white supremacist context. So what was, in our eyes, especially as a white person in a mostly white community, we see, you know, a violent, uh, a violent encounter between, uh, a school, a security guard and a, and a black youth. But, you know, a heightened dialogue about the N-word isn't something where we should then punitively punish a youth for five days and interfere with his ability to graduate well. Uh, that was a really a shame. And really it's connected to, that situation is definitely connected to the climate that we see in the community and the climate that we see in the schools. The climate in Madison's public schools are plantation-based, are prison-based. It's a white supremacist culture that honors punitive justice rather than restorative justice. And so what I see is a real gap in resources for culturally relevant programming that is led and for black and brown youth in the schools. You know, I, I usually find what I need to say in these meetings very early on and, and I see in the back, we have this list of all the different donations and grants received by MMSD. And the grand total here is $195,000 from people in the community, right? This is probably mostly white folks, um, who have their bills paid, who are able to pay, um, into such things like orchestra or yearbook or running club. The Science Olympiad, you saw we were honoring the science students here earlier today. Um, or the Disney musical. But what I don't see in here, I only see it mentioned once, but I don't see much of funding from the community or from MMSD for that matter, for BSU, for Kamai Youth Group, for Chicanx and Latinx students, for indigenous students. Like, right now, there's an indigenous uprising happening in Ecuador. I think it would be a responsibility for MMSD to make sure that the youth in schools are able to get connected with what's going on around the world in indigenous communities for solidarity, um, and for liberation movements against the continuation of colonization and white supremacy. And so we're doing a real disservice by taking $360,000 and putting that into police officers when we could take all of that money, plus the $195,000 and really make sure that that goes to youth-led organizations and clubs, but also to trusted adults like the women who are in this room. You know, and even to people like Marlon, who's a trusted adult. So that's where we need to redistribute wealth and power. And I think there's an opportunity ahead of you all to do that. I hope that you all do take that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel?
Uh, good evening board members. My name is Daniel West. I'm also a parent of Ma-, of Madison Metropolitan.
Can you speak closer to the mic, please?
Good evening board members. My name is Daniel West. I also am a parent. I'm not here to speak about the same thing as these, as the young people who I've been so impressed with. But it is gonna sound like it's along the same lines. I thought that I was just here looking for just some equality. But again, listening to these children back here, these young people are, are really something that we should all, as Madisonians, be proud of. The reason I'm here tonight is because minority officials are disappearing from our basketball courts, our sports arenas here in the Madison Metropolitan School Districts as well. And I see that some athletic directors are here. And listening to, to all of this, uh, really sounds like it's a racist, race, racial issue. But I would hope that in the case of the officials, it's a numbers issue. We are down in numbers. Uh, there's ju-, I'm speaking really just for a handful of people, but I see some opportunities to help a lot of ourselves. Some of the money that they speak of can be invested in things like helping us to recruit young minority officials. I've seen, uh, minority officials actually leave Madison because they say they don't have a chance here anyway. I've been officiating sports for 16 or 17 years. I'm from an all-sports background. I played, I played basketball in the Marine Corps for four years. And when I hear people say, thank you for your service, and then I walk into a Madison school bo-, uh, to a Madison gym and no respect to officials, and then also seeing that the gentlemen that I pointed out as athletic directors, they can fix a lot of this. They can help or they can continue to, to let things stand the way they are. And the reason, the reason I was here is just thinking that, you know, if the school board heard that black officials are and these kids knowing that we can't get no black officials on our games either, that's another reason for them to be rowdy. And nobody wants that. What we can do here as parents, as leaders in the Madison area, is we can invest in helping the WIA recruit kids to come and officiate minorities. Uh, the WIA, they're not innocent either, uh, as you can see from the, the representation of minority officials in the state tournaments these last couple of years. Not even just the last couple of years, since I've been living here. I'm probably thinking, I'm, I'm standing up here right now thinking that I've just given my officiating career for high school the death penalty. But in our actuality, I'm not worried about it because I don't get their games anyway. If I want games, I have to do what I've done and go out and go to national camps. I'm also a NCAA licensed official. Uh, and from being a Marine and coming from an all-black, I did not know that the racial line was blurred so bad. I did not know. When you're in the Marine Corps, they say one thing to you, we all bleed blue. Well, we're Madisonians, we all are the same color on the inside. Let's not lose what we have, an opportunity to do a lot here together. I'm open to all suggestions, vocational and recruiting. Let's help me, help them, help you, help our school, help our city. Thanks for your time.
Thank you Daniel. Sonia Worthy?
Uh, Sonia's giving us their time. Uh, as your physician, I'd like to give a few words. Uh, having cops in schools was implemented as a means of protecting students from potential school shootings. The goal, police enforcement is commonly just a means of disciplining underprivileged youth of color, especially black students. Wisconsin was found to have the highest amount of disproportionate arrests for marijuana of any state in the nation, according to a 2013 report from ACLU. Madison as a school district has especially used the police as a means of unnecessarily punishing black girls struggling with mental illness. With this city's long history of racism, it's no surprise racial profiling has affected the mental health of students of color. Police presence in our school has vastly expanded while the funding for counseling services has been reduced. All the while, black and brown students are being charged with harsher crimes related to weed while white students are not. The school to prison pipeline burdens and our cries for help are met with racially profiled arrests. What Freedom Inc. asks of you is three things. One, remove police from our institutions. We deserve a right to education without fear of persecution for who we are. Two, use the money currently being funneled into expanding the police presence in our schools to instead fund programs and efforts to promote the wellness of your black and brown students. And three, let our communities discipline our students. Too often have the police been brought precariously into situations and too often have students my age die for the racist violent assumptions police have made about them. One death is one too many, so why hasn't this issue been addressed at its root?
Hello, my name is Marco, uh, I use he-him. Uh, seeing police at school has not only affected my academics but has also affected my mental well-being. When I see a police, instead of thinking, oh, they are here to protect me, I think I'm going to get arrested because I am Latino. I have never once felt safe around police because of how cruelly they have treated POC around the world. Sure, this is specifically for the police in the school district, but this goes way beyond just that. Um, we're seeing more and more POC teens being treated with such disrespect for simply being black or Hispanic. As a middle schooler, I would see the police and think, these are the good guys that are going to protect me from danger. And that quickly changed after I got the stares, after me and my other POC friends being sketchy. It worsened when I got to high school. My first encounter with this kind of mistreatment was a year ago. All me and my friends did was sit on the bleachers eating our lunch. We spotted some police officers and we didn't mind them till they started staring at us. They then proceeded to circle us. One of my friends, who is white, started getting up and walking in the direction that they had not been in. Instead of thinking, oh, I can explain this and I can explain that we're not doing anything and it'll be fine, I thought these people are going to shoot or arrest me simply for minding my own business. I also got up and walked with my friend, since I thought it was the safest move, um, in that situation. They started walking behind us as if we were doing something wrong. I was later called down to the office and questioned about whether or not I was doing drugs on the bleachers. I thought, why would they think that? I'm not one to do that on school property. Was it because of the way I was dressed? Was it because somebody was doing drugs? But I can tell you now that it's not. It's because I'm Latino and racial profiling is a very common thing that happens. Um, another instance was when there were multiple fights in one day and a lot of the kids were, at least the most of them, were kids of color and most of them had injuries. In particular, though this friend wasn't a P-POC, she was very tan and I witnessed her get slammed into the floor and treated like she was some danger when all she was doing was checking up on a friend. Though I'm not in a Madison school, that doesn't lessen the value of my experience because I'm a human being and I'm being affected by police presence on a daily basis. My speech's goal are these four things. No cops in schools. Please use the money to fund promotion of wellness of black and brown youth. Please let the community have control over disciplining students. And we really need to put an end to the constant torment and fear me and a million of other kids are feeling. Thank you.
Thank you. Crossbones Schmidt?
Hi. Tonight I am here to hopefully give you a suggestion that will be helpful, um, for you as a board in your processes and deliberations of different topics. Um, earlier this month, it was on the agenda at the instructional work group meeting. You can start. Do you wanna start my three minutes?
Is it not on?
It's on now.
Go ahead.
You as board members ask many good questions such as, how does participation in advanced learning at the K-8 level correlate with participation in advanced coursework at the high school level? Do we have examples of schools, classrooms and teachers who are doing a good job of helping students of color succeed in advanced coursework? What evidence is there that earned honors are as rigorous as standalone honors courses? We have to move past the discussion of students identified and discuss what actual advanced instruction and programming looks like in our schools. Right now, we have no way of knowing what is being taught, what does support look like? There was a pilot done at four elementary schools. Why didn't this pilot succeed and what is replacing it? How does this work connect with the work of black excellence? There are many other good points made and questions asked at this meeting with promises for future follow-up. How and when these questions get answered in a transparent way for you and for the larger community? It's not just for this one topic. Whether you're talking about advanced learners, English language learners, the behavior education plan, special education students, a new literacy curriculum, student achievements, school safety or school climate, please give yourselves as the Board of Education a process and a space to have your questions answered. It can't be the next time any topic is on the agenda for another work group, which could be a year from that point. You currently have two meetings a month when a topic could be discussed, a work group and then a general meeting. Here's my suggestion. Continue the in-depth discussions and the really good questions you're asking at the work group meetings. Please use the time updating the board at the general meetings to receive answers to the important questions you asked at earlier meetings. Otherwise, what you're asking will not be answered and we will continue having the same discussions- same discussions over and over about the same topics. I'm frustrated. There was a lot of information provided to you earlier this month that was misguided and simply not correct. You also need to accurately evaluate what schools are doing, how the policy and plans you have approved are being implemented, how students are experiencing them, and if progress is being made. This can't wait till an external evaluation happens every five years. There is ways to do this. Please continue to ask the good questions you are asking and the time you're investing to be knowledgeable about any given topic as a board. Also, please require a follow-up to your questions and community concerns in a way that is transparent and holds our district accountable for making progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Public comment. Um, moving on to President's Report, we have a few things on the agenda. First, we'll start with the, um, October Designated Gifted Education Month. I'm going to read a proclamation, uh, conducted by the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. Whereas our children and youth are one of Wisconsin's greatest resources accordingly, all students with intellectual, academic, creative, leadership, and artistic gifts and talents need to be appropriately identified, instructed, and supported. And whereas, just as giftedness comes in a variety of domains, it has no limits related to age, race, ethnicity, or national origin, economic status, sex, gender, identity, or gender expression, sexual orientation, religion, multilingualism, or exceptionality. And whereas, collaboration between these organizations, community members, nations, and the students themselves serve as the critical foundation for supporting high ability and high potential children and youth. And whereas, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction joins the leadership of the Wisconsin Association for Talented and Gifted, the Wisconsin Center for Academically Talented Youth, and the Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators, the Wisconsin Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, the Wisconsin RTL Center and Cooperative Educational Service Agencies, as we work together to support Wisconsin's children with gifts and talents. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Carolyn Stanford Taylor, State Superintendent with Public Instruction, do hereby reclaim in the state of Wisconsin Gifted Education Month, October 1st through 31st, 2019. Next, um, is the National Parental Involvement Day, November 21st, 2019. The National Parental, uh, Parental Involvement Day falling next month on November 21st, 2019 is an opportunity to highlight and honor the essential contributions that parents and guardians provide at school and home to support student success. The Board of Education would like to read a proclamation recognizing this important day. Whereas, research indicates a strong correlation between student achievement and family engagement. Whereas, National Parental Envir- Involvement Day is observed in Wisconsin on the third Thursday in November to celebrate the recruitment, engagement, and recognition of the contributions of dedicated school volunteers and families taking an active role in their child's education. Now therefore, the Madison Metropolitan School District Board of Education recognizes all the ways parents, guardians, and other family members are involved in their child's education. Be it resolved, this statement be permanently imprinted in the Board of Education Minutes for the regular meeting of October 28th, 2019.
(Crowd: Fight for freedom!)
Next, we have, uh, Wisconsin School Boards Week, October 6th through the 12th, 2019. I'm going to have to speak louder so everybody can hear. I'll just scream it out. Uh, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, uh, recognizes the week of October 6th through October 12th as Wisconsin School Board Week. This week helps celebrate and create an understanding of the vital function of each one of our board members, plays in ensuring the success of our students and the advancement of equitable practices and creating equitable environments. I would like to thank every board member here for the hard work you all do. It's an honor to serve and to keep serving with each one of you. Next announcement is the, we're looking for our next superintendent. We are currently in the process, um, as you know. We need your input. Your ideas will help, uh, create a unique leadership profile that we will use to evaluate and make decisions about candidates. We hope that you will join us to voice your ideas on Tuesday, October 29th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM at Memorial High School, or Wednesday, October 30th, from 7:00 to 8:30 at La Follette High School. There'll be interpretation in Spanish and Mung, um, and if you can't attend a session, you can go, uh, to our MMSD, uh, website, mmmsd.org, to take part in our survey. Uh, last on, uh, President's Announcement is we would like to, um, talk about the recent events, um, West High, in West High School. Um, I just want to read a brief statement, and then I'll go ahead and open it up to the board. MMSD will remain strong in anti-racist educators within a district that supports all students. We will continue to, our work to eliminate racial slurs and the harm caused to students and staff. We will maintain our focus on black excellence and lifting up all of our students of color. The Board Policy Committee and the Legal Council will review the specif- the specific, specific of current policy and make any changes needed as soon as possible. The administration will review the practices and account for appropriate nuances to be implemented when a substantiated incident occurs. An input group will be informed to provide community voice to change, to change, in changes in the practice. An equity team will design lessons for students with resources for teachers appropriate for each instructional level regarding the use of racial slurs piloted this spring. The board will be updated on this, uh, regularly. I would like to open this up to the board for a brief discussion, and I want to start with Ali Muldrill, if you can lead us in the discussion.
I think what has been evident throughout this dialogue is that we struggle as a community to have conversations about race. And I think it is, uh, a profoundly important thing for us as a district to commit to anti-racism, but I think that means addressing and acknowledging what racism is. I also think conflating the N-word with all derogatory terminology is a way of denying the history of black people in this community. And I think if we're going to talk about the N-word, then we have to do that within the con- to have conversations about things like slavery and civil rights, uh, and civil disobedience, and the role of the police in schools. And I think we have to do that with a sense of complexity and nuance. And I think our inability to do that, um, is, is the reason that we have continued to perpetuate some of the most, you know, horrific results for African-American students in the country. Um, and so I think if we're having a conversation about the N-word, if we're having a conversation about racism, we need to acknowledge those things.
Yep. Thank you, Ali. Savian?
Yep. Um, central at this discussion is the use of the N-word, and you know, I am here today, Ali is here today, as the descendant of folks who were enslaved from cradle to grave for generations. Uh, we're here today fully aware of the cruelty and barbarity of our ancestors who were dispossessed and disenfranchised. And in those social institutions, this N-word was used to inflict white supremacist terror and violence. And we need to have a real conversation about how that manifests itself in our city and in our discussions. Um, as well, you know, there in the crowd, Noah and Alana, uh, two incredible leaders from West have, uh, done some really hard and good work in terms of trying to guide our policy moving forward and beyond, and how black students and black folks in our district, um, uh, can have more voice and leadership in terms of forming policy going forward. And I'm really proud of the work that y'all have done, so, um, and definitely looking forward to working with y'all more.
Gloria?
Great.
May I speak after Savian?
Um, just a moment, Nikki. I'm going to, um, pass it on to, uh, Ananda.
So, um, thank you, Gloria, and thank you, Ali and Savian, for that. Um, I would like to, um, extend the, the concern, uh, to other communities of color that, in particular, a community that not, that at times don't have the contact, the, the, haven't been exposed to historical context of the word, uh, or have been exposed to words that, uh, are similar in nature from our own countries, and how that adds complexity to the understanding, um, uh, the, the conceptual understanding of that word. And it still gives no excuse for, uh, the use or the absorption of, of not, uh, fully understanding the impact on, on black people and the historical context on black people in this country, uh, and the inherentness of, of, of slavery and, um, and oppression that, um, black people is still experiencing, uh, today in our community. So, thank you for that. Uh, thank you for the students that have, um, shown us, all of us, great leadership and that. And I'm very humbled to serve in a board, uh, with majority people of color and, uh, with two amazing, uh, individuals that identify as black and that have, um, uh, taught me so much and continue to teach me so much. So, thank you both.
Nikki? Nikki, are you there? Okay, let's move on. Nikki, can you hear me? I don't hear anything.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Now you can hear me?
Yep.
I'd like to say that I am glad that MMSD administration came to the consensus that we needed to look at context. I feel that's probably the most important thing in this issue, along with having an honest and open discussion on race. One that is led by our students of color, one that is led by our board members of color, who can make and work out statements on how they are truly affected by the use of that word. I appreciate their hard work, for this was not an easy time for anyone, what they put out and assisting in any way possible.
Thank you, Nikki. Do you want? Go ahead, Chris.
Um, I, is that on? Um, I want to thank all the board members who've spoken before me. I really appreciate your perspectives, and I appreciate your call and challenge to us to, to have difficult conversations about race as a board. I think we need to do that if we're going to move forward. Um, I also want to acknowledge the people who wrote to the board over the past week and a half, especially all of the students. We received a lot of email, and a lot of those incredibly thoughtful and heartfelt, and clearly took a lot of time. I want to acknowledge that that community voice matters very much to the board when we think about difficult issues like this. So, thank you. Um, I look forward to, um, examining policy as a board, to doing this transparently so that the community has a voice in this, and especially doing this in partnership with our black student unions. I think their voice is critically important right now because it's harm to youth that we're trying to prevent. And finally, I, I appreciate the, the acknowledgement that we need to consider context and circumstance and move away from zero tolerance. We've, we've made a commitment to do this for our youth because we've realized that zero tolerance leads to, to, to negative outcomes for children. And each in our schools, I think we do need to move towards an approach that does take context and circumstance into account when considering the harm that's been done.
Thank you. Kate?
Not sure I have a lot to add after all of that. Um, we have an opportunity to be better. It's our job to lead that discussion. And I'm grateful to be able to follow the lead of a lot of people here, and a lot of people in the audience who are doing that incredibly effectively, so.
Thank you. Um, this was a test, I think, for our district, um, in our community. Um, it was, uh, an example of, um, really what happens when we're trying to tackle racism within our institution and within our community. Uh, and when people stand up, uh, like our students, um, nationally, um, and locally here, it really is, um, I think it takes a lot for people to stand up, and I appreciate that. I also want to, um, just really give a shout-out to our administration, our team. Um, they have been very committed, uh, to, uh, anti-racism in our schools. Uh, we all feel strongly that it's not, um, we cannot have a culture where, um, that exists to impact our communities, our students of color. Um, so I really want to thank our administration, uh, for their work. I want to thank them for the future, uh, for the work that they will continue to do and work alongside, um, good practices and policies, uh, to, um, to continue to make our, our schools anti-racist. So, thank you. All right. Jane, do you have anything? Okay. All right. Let's move on to, um, no report from the superintendent. Uh, report on items that proceeded through the Instruction Work Group held on October 7th, 2019. Ananda?
So, we had a discussion at our last, um, thank you, Chris. At our Advanced Learner, uh, Advanced Learner. I appreciate the Lisa's team, um, on putting a lot of information together for us. Appreciate, uh, my fellow, um, board members with the, and then always, um, inquiring about this working and making us, uh, think, um, deeper about making sure that this work takes hold. What I shared in the instruction group, I, our work group, I'll, I'll share it again, you know, the, the plans are, are part of the work. Um, the most, the most of the lift is around implementation, and we need to rely on our staff and our teachers, um, to, to carry that work forward. Uh, I wanted to also, uh, sh- uh, share that we always receive, um, a lot of information from advocates, and we always really appreciate that information that gets sent to us. Lastly, um, we have our next, um, work group scheduled for November 4th. And, and that work group, we are, um, have already planning, already presenting Human Growth and Development Curriculum, an update, uh, which is something that I know, um, many of our board members feel, uh, really strong about, and I know we have received many, many, uh, much advocacy around the implementation of that curriculum, and I'm looking forward to that discussion with all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ananda. A report on items that proceeded through the Operations Work Group held on October 21st, 2019.
Yep. So, we, um, last week had our, uh, final look at the 2019-2020 Academic Year Budget, um, which is up for a vote tonight, along with the tax levy. Um, it's a strong budget. It's the last budget of the 2016 referendum, which has allowed us to invest, um, a lot into the schools. Um, a couple of items of note that I'll just call out, and they're from our memo that we reviewed last week. Um, but we've had the opportunity this year to invest 1.7 million of services in special education, um, funds into black excellence and the early college STEM academy, um, which has been off to a, um, excellent start this year, and then an average of 4.44% compensation increase for our staff. Um, that is up for a vote tonight, which will be the final, um, vote for this year's academic, um, budget. And next, uh, next month, on November 11th, we will dive straight into the budget for next year, um, as well as a check-in on the referendum. So, no rest for the weary. So...
Great. Okay. And no action items, uh, in the Instruction Work Group. Um, so then we'll move on to the action items that proceeded through Operations Work Group held on October 21st, 2019, and that's the budget, budget tax levy finalization. Who's going to speak on that? Or, is anybody? Okay. All right. Um... I move that the board approve and adopt the 2019-2020 budget as presented in the materials for the October 28, 2019 regular meeting in the following amounts. Total revenue for all funds, net of inter-fund 170 billion 472 million 778,001. Oh wait, million, sorry.
Gloria, can you repeat the number?
Yeah, 471 million 472,778,001. Make sense? Okay.
One second.
Yep. Total expenditures for all funds, net of inter-fund transfers, 479 million 334,072.91. Okay? Got it? Okay. I further move that the board certify that the 2019-2020 all funds tax levy in conjunction with the 2019-2020 budget, in a total tax levy amount of 305,993, which consists of the following specific subcomponents. Fund 10, General Fund, 299 million 437,819. What did I say? 537, I'm sorry, 299 million 537,819. Fund 38, Non-Referendum Debt Service, 5 million, I'm sorry, 5,000, 5,257,768. Fund 39, Referendum Approved Debt Service, 8 million 300,900. Fund 41, Capital Expansion Fund, 5 million. Fund 80, Community Services Fund, 12 million 9,506. Total tax levy is 330 million 105,993. Second? Second? All of those in favor? Discussion, I'm sorry.
Okay. So first of all, I want to give a shout out to Kelly for answering my many, many questions about the budget as a first-year board member. Thank you so much for just patiently answering all my questions. While I support this budget, the devil's in the details of how it is implemented. And as we go into this vote, I just want to point out that we also received a class size report this week, and we have class sizes at high-poverty schools that are bigger than we would like. There's 11 elementary sections in high-poverty schools that are well, that are above our class size maximum, spelled out in policy. 10 of those are kindergarten through third grade classes, where our kids need the most attention. We have 30 sections, kindergarten through third grade, in high-poverty schools with more than 18 children, which used to not happen in Madison. At the high school level, we have 115 math, English, science, and social studies sections that have 31 or more students. Sections that size make it harder for teachers to provide students with good feedback on their papers, their writing, their assignments. It just makes learning more difficult. On top of that, we have heard from psychologists, social workers, SEAs, mental health support is not where it should be in some of our schools. In this budget, we absolutely did the right thing for a lot of things, like Black Excellence and staff pay, and the many things that Kate mentioned, but I felt like, I feel like this budget could have done better on some. We need to maintain a healthy fund balance, that's part of what we do, and if you look at last year's budget, we put about $2.2 million of savings into the fund balance. And this year, I hope as we're thinking about how we spend money that doesn't go spent because we have vacant positions or whatever, that we're thinking about the needs of our kids first and foremost, before we think about the fund balance, and what we need to do to make sure that we have the best outcomes possible for all of our students, particularly students who are experiencing poverty, or students who we know are not seeing the outcome for whom we should, such as students of color. Above all, our day-to-day budgets, decisions need to prioritize the working and learning conditions in our schools first and foremost.
Thank you, Chris.
Anybody else? Ali?
I appreciate what you have to say. I'm having a hard time kind of wrapping my head around everything that you just said in terms of the implications for class sizes and this specific budget. I think we invested in our faculty to the greatest extent, and to our staff to the greatest extent that we have in the last 10 years. I think saying that we did justice by the concept that is Black Excellence, by investing less in it than we are currently in, is what I've seen over and over again, which is like the idea that investing anything in communities of color is enough of an investment. And so, I think that that is a new initiative, and a hopeful initiative, and an initiative that informs the entire budget, and the entire work of the district. But by no means do I think what we did this year in terms of Black Excellence, or in terms of restorative justice, or in terms of the needs of students of color, is enough. Nor do I look back nostalgically at the time when I went to school here, or the class sizes, or the results that they produced. And so I think if we're gonna talk about, you know, those things within the context of the budget, we need to do so expansively, and I would hope that we would move that conversation to an in-depth conversation that we can all participate in. But I don't think that that is necessarily the conversation we're having right now. I am proud of the work that this board put into this budget, and I'm proud to be part of the board that invested more in our educators and our staff than we have in the last 10 years, and I think that we all should be.
Thank you, Ali. Kate?
Yeah, so I want to thank the board. First of all, we spend half our, half our time engaging with the budget, and it is hard work to allocate hundreds of millions of dollars from the city of Madison into an incredibly complex system, and a system with tremendous opportunity for our city and for our youth. So first, thank you, and maybe a pay it forward, because we're gonna dive right back in next month. My biggest thank you, honestly, the community of Madison is an incredible supporter of public education, and this budget is the strongest budget we've passed since I've been on the board, and it is because the community invested in our schools four years ago as a part of the operating referendum that we were able to do this this year. It's because of the community and our state that we were able to incrementally invest in our staff this year, and pass the single biggest compensation increase since the turn of the century, the millennium. So, we're, we are so lucky to live in a place that is willing to see the hope and see the potential, and put our money where our mouth is, and so I want to mostly thank. It's our job to use those funds wisely, it's our job to have hard discussions among many competing initiatives on how to use those funds wisely. I think we're doing that, I think this board is incredibly well-poised to do that this year, and we are going to have to without the automatic renewal of a referendum. So there's a lot to come there, but thank you to the city, thank you to administration who I know do a ton of work on this, and to Kelly who's not here, and to Chad who have spent a lot of time enabling, enabling our good discussions, and I look forward to what comes ahead.
Thank you, Kate. Anyone else? All right, okay. Nika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt and approve all of the motions set forth in Section 10 of the electronic agenda prepared for the October 28, 2019 regular school board meeting, exactly as said motions are written. By voting affirmatively, board member expresses his or her affirmative vote on each of the motions consolidated hereby, subject to any express separations that have been made by any member of the school board. Second. Any separations?
I'd like to separate 10.8.
10.8? All right. Any other separations? All right, then we will go ahead and vote on the others, except 10.8. Nika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's move on to 10.8. Contract for Dane County Time Bank.
Okay, so first of all, I fully support this partnership, continuing this partnership with the Time Bank. Sorry, I fully put a couple of things out there. First of all, I would like to see the partnership scoring rubric for this partnership, just looking at what's on the rubric and looking at how our partnership with Dane County Time Bank is growing and evolving. I'm just wondering if we're moving towards a high-intensity partnership, and so I would just like to see where they. Only, I would, you know, I don't need this information now, but it would be helpful to get more information about how we're gonna measure the success of the whole school restorative approach at La Follette, you know, especially if we're looking at scaling up and trying to make decisions about whether we do this at more high schools, so.
Xavier?
Yeah, I've had some really good conversations with Devon over at La Follette, and how this school year is going, and yeah, great work, I think there's potential to increase capacity. Would like to know more as we head into the next budget cycle about what the Time Bank can do as well, so. You know, it, never mind, sorry.
Ananda?
I appreciate the conversation about restorative justice, but it has been a program that has been, have served an immense amount of students, have supported a lot of the climate and culture change in our schools, and have not received the investment, the priority that we need to, in order for a full culture shift. And I'll add that, you know, as we're having conversations about funding police in schools, and, you know, paying like a fraction of that in a restorative justice, it feels, you know, you really see how, you know, what's our priority, how we're prioritizing that work.
Xavier?
To Ananda's point about a culture shift within our school district going forward, you know, it's really important that we don't pigeonhole restorative justice, just in terms of the context of discipline, because it really is a way of life. And if we fully embrace restorative justice, we embrace it in everything we do.
Yep, great. Ali?
I fully support the work of the Time Bank, and I have gotten to experience the work of the Time Bank. I think one of the things we need to look at in terms of examining the Time Bank is our utilization of it, and the ability of our police officers to work in collaboration with the Time Bank, and so are we utilizing it to the fullest extent? Because it is a means for students to avoid the criminal justice system, and to avoid citations and sanctions, and a variety of other things that lead to long-term relationships. And so, I fully support this investment in the Time Bank. I think we should continue this work, and I think we should both examine the work of the Time Bank, but also examine our own ability to utilize that work.
Great, yeah, I, Time Bank is so influential within our schools. I think we, it would be, I think I would recommend on getting an update on the Time Bank sometime in the near future, within one of our operating work groups in the future. I think it would be very beneficial to get a, to just assess where we are, and then plan for our future, so that we can actually, and funding resources to the work of Time Bank, and expand it throughout our schools. So, it sounds like Jane would, will include that in the future operations work group meeting. Go, Ali?
I just want to add, I think it would be really helpful to see the comprehensive restorative justice approach that the district's doing, because there is internal work, there is the work with the YWCA as well, so it'd be, you know, for lifting that, all that work, I think it'd be good to have a comprehensive conversation with all the efforts.
Yes, great, thank you. All right, so it is recommended that the Board of Education approve entering into a contract between Madison Metropolitan School District and Dane County Time Bank for the 2019-2020 school year, for a total of 84,441, using funds from the Student and Staff Support General Operating Budget. Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Nika, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So now we're on to other reports to the board. We'll start with the City of Madison Education Committee.
So we have met last week, really interesting discussion, as we were beginning the work with the new elected officers, including myself. The committee had a really good conversation around membership, and also one of, the other concern was in regards to the name of the committee. So it was an adoption, we had a vote to adopt the, to recommend the adoption of renaming the committee to be Joint County City Schools Collaborative Committee. That recommendation will be sent to the city council for further review, and we'll hear more on that hopefully soon. We are, the next, our next committee is scheduled for December, we're trying to see if we can find a November date, because we had to reschedule to observance of holidays, but we are expecting to have a pretty robust conversation about what is the committee is going to be focusing on in the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ananda. Student Senate?
For MSCR?
Just a second Nikki, we're moving on to Student Senate.
So Student Senate met last week, where we talked about the incident out West. It led to a really interesting discussion about race, in which I learned a lot, and students articulated a need for a more culturally inclusive history curriculum from a young age.
Great, thank you. Madison, MSCR Nikki?
Hi, to illness, same illness that is causing me to call in tonight. However, several important things happened, new members were introduced, and it was decided and formalized that Janet Dreyer will serve as interim executive director until June 30th, 2020, that our fall programs are off to a great start, and that we're, our next meeting is December 18th, 2019, at the Meadowwood Neighborhood Center.
Thank you Nikki. Next, we're moving on to other business. The 2018, 2019 student graduates list. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the list of graduates, granted diplomas from the start date of 2018, 2019 school year, through the start date of the 2019-2020 school year. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, we're, now we're at adjournment, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.